The continued safety of the public staff members in the Boston Zoning Commission. The open meeting law requires I notify the public that this virtual meeting is being recorded. Please be advised that an audio and video recording of this meeting is being made. At this, at this time, we're going to introduce the interpreters. Interpreters will introduce themselves at this morning's hearings.
Hello, my name is Hauran and I am the Mandarin interpreter for this morning's meeting. Ah, my name is Jia Hauran, ah, I'm your today's morning translator. Ah, when the host opens the translator room, you can hear the translator's voice. Ah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Ethan Kwang and I'm a Cantonese interpreter this morning. Um, everyone, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this session. Good morning, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning. Um, everyone, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning. Um, everyone, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning. Um, everyone, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning. Um, everyone, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning.
Good morning, everyone, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this session. Good morning, my name is David Molina and I will be the Spanish interpreter for this morning. We give the welcome to the City of Boston Zoning Commission. On this day, we will have an open meeting to present the project of the Western Avenue 287. This is an open meeting for the public. Therefore, this meeting will be recorded. If you want to see this meeting, you will be able to access the recording of this meeting. This evening as well, this morning, we will be able to access the interpretation service. And also, those of you who can listen in another language will be able to access the interpretation channels that will appear in the bottom part of your screen. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jay, we should be, we should be good to go now.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll take a roll call as zoning commissioners. Jill Hatton.
Present.
Michael Nichols.
Present.
Mike DeMello, are you recusing on this?
I, I am here, but we were accusing on the first item.
Okay. Nelson Arroyo. Nelson.
I did it.
David Ma.
Did you hear me? Did he hear me?
Yeah, yeah, they're all set. David Ma. Drew Left.
Present.
Aisha Miller.
Present.
Midori Morikawa.
Present.
Ricardo Ostrich.
Present.
And Jay Hurley is present.
Did you hear me?
Who's, who's speaking?
That's Nelson.
Nelson, I got you, yeah, I didn't get David Ma.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, David's not here. He joins us, I'll let you know. My name is Public Herring. This is a hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission will consider a petition for the approval of MAP Amendment Application Number 774 and a petition for approval of Development Plan for Plan Development Area Number 148, 287 Western Ave, Alston. The hearing was duly advertised February 8th in the Boston Herald. In the Boston Zoning Commission hearing on petitions, the proponents will first present their case, subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in opposition at the same time. You're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff if you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I will advise you when you have 30 seconds remaining, at that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue when others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief five to 10 minute period for rebuttal if they desire, if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Quinn Valsich. I'm a senior project manager in the development review team of the BPDA. Uh, the proposal before you is for a MAP Amendment for a PDA Development Plan for Plan Development Area Number 148, which accompanied an Article 80 large project known as the 287 Western Avenue Project in the Alston neighborhood of Boston. The proposed project's for a mixed-use building containing approximately 92,000 square feet of gross floor area comprised of office and R and D space, replacement space for a Boston EMS facility, shared amenity space, and approximately 3,000 square feet of ground floor public co-working and meeting space. The project includes parking for up to 36 vehicles, indoor bicycle parking space for at least 36 bicycles, and will be designed to target LEED gold standards. The project will construct a low-stress bike lane along Western Avenue to link the broader community network in line with what was envisioned in the Western Avenue Corridor rezoning study. Uh, the proponents are providing approximately 1,700 square feet of space for Boston EMS to continue the operation of a two ambulance-based facility on the site for at least the next 10 years. And I handed over to my colleague Ted Schwartzberg from the BPDA Zoning Compliance Team to say a few words before the proponents begin their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. I'm Ted Schwartzberg, Assistant Deputy Director for Zoning Compliance at the BPDA. Uh, I have three slides on the planning and zoning context that guided staff review of this proposal. Uh, in terms of planning, uh, this was, uh, in the, uh, Western Avenue Corridor Study and Rezoning Area. Uh, this was completed in 2022, and I believe you've seen a few other proposals come through this area. It's known as WACERZI. Uh, other policies that informed staff review, uh, were smart utilities policy and EV readiness, readiness policy, complete streets and BTD park maximums, uh, and bike parking and, uh, transportation demand management policies as administered by the Boston Transportation Department. Uh, and in the neighborhood context, this is, uh, adjacent to Barry's Corner, uh, with Harvard Avenue to the east. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, in the second paragraph on the right, uh, the most relevant goals from the planning process uh, were for this specific part of the, uh, study area and the Barry's Corner node. Uh, the plan envisioned a denser mixed-use retail office lab in, uh, uh, job-serving neighborhood, uh, that has 24/7, uh, access, uh, 24/7 node with transit access, uh, and gathering spaces for Alston Brighton and public realm enhancements such as street trees and transit stop amenities. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of zoning, uh, this is, um, compliant with the WACERZI zoning that I mentioned earlier. Uh, and that zoning itself is, uh, consistent with the planning process that preceded it. Uh, in terms of use, new lab space is consistent with planning for this specific node. Uh, and provision of, uh, civic-oriented uses on the ground floor, including the EMS space, is also consistent with the planning. Uh, the dimensions are consistent with planning. Uh, and in terms of public realm, uh, setbacks and public realm improvements that Quinn mentioned earlier are also consistent with planning. Uh, this is consistent with the WACERZI and Complete Streets guidelines, uh, and then consistent with transportation, uh, regulations that I mentioned earlier, as well as high-performance building envelope, uh, accommodation of, uh, wider and western, widened Western Avenue, and then creation of space for Boston EMS. And, uh, with that, I conclude the planning and zoning context slides and hand it off to the proponent team. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Ted. Good morning, everyone. My name is Mike Domenico with King Street Properties. Uh, I'm one of the partners here, and I'm also joined by Chris Rehner from Goulson Stores, our legal counsel, as well as Matthew Pierce and Derek Johnson from Perkins and Will, who are the architects for the project. Uh, I just wanted to start off by thanking the commission for your time this morning. I also wanted to thank Quinn, uh, Director Jamison and the BPDA staff for helping us navigate through this project. And also wanted to recognize Counselor Brayden, our impact advisory groups, and the community for their time and valuable feedback on our project. Um, so with that, we just wanted to begin with a little context map here. On the star, you can see where the site is located for 287 Western Avenue. It's located near the intersection of Everett Street that runs north-south during, uh, in the center of the page, and Western Avenue running east-west. Next slide, please. Uh, zooming in for a little bit more context of the neighborhood, uh, you can see we're located to the west of Smith Field, and the road that's running on the north side is Soldiers Field Road. Uh, the sites directly to the west of 287 and directly to the south of 287 are currently under development uh, with our larger mixed-use development known as Alston Lab Works. Next slide, please. Uh, these images show the existing site conditions. Uh, images number one and number, number two show the view of the site looking from Western Ave North. You can see the building is a two-story, um, currently vacant, uh, brick office building. And on images three and four, they're also from Western Avenue, looking on the east side of the site where you can see uh, currently vacant auto body shop. The other use on the site, uh, is it's currently home to the Boston EMS, which uses it as, uh, garage space for their emergency vehicles. Next slide, please. Uh, so the scope of this project, uh, the main use here is graduation space for life science research and development companies. And I'm sure, uh, most of you are aware and have read about the amount of life science, uh, space that's been developed in the past few years in the greater Boston area, and I wanted to address that, uh, first by saying that we at King Street are long-term, uh, believers in the life science industry and the life science space. It's very important to our economy here, and it's critical for us to all live healthier lives. Uh, secondly, what we're proposing to build here is, uh, a use that is going to complement the development in the area and not compete with it. And what I mean by that is that we're building space that is specifically designed for companies that are ready to leave, um, an incubator space and grow into their first demised space. Now, they may not be ready to take a large block of space and take on the capital expense associated with building out that real estate. So we are going to be delivering pre-built, fully furnished suites that are designed for these early-stage companies. Another element of our project is a flexible high base space, uh, that's located on the east side of the building. Um, what that means is this is a space that's flexible with high ceiling heights that could be used for companies that are involved with small-scale manufacturing or robotics. Uh, another use here is what you can see on the image in front of you. On the right-hand side, on the first floor, is a public co-working space. And we designed this as a community benefit for the use of local residents. Um, with the rise and, uh, popularity of remote work and working from home, we wanted to create a space that would invite the community in and provide a space for them to work outside of their living rooms without going into the office. So this will be a space that has free Wi-Fi, reservable conference rooms, and desk space for people to work outside of their homes. Um, another big part of our public benefit that was mentioned is that we're providing a brand-new home for the Boston EMS. We've been in discussions with, uh, Chief Uli and have come to an agreement on the design of the space and the terms of the agreement that allows them to stay in the project for the long term. Uh, a very important part of that agreement is we've also arranged for temporary space for them to stay in the laborhood, in the neighborhood, uh, in an adjacent building while this project is under construction so that there'll be no downtime in service to the neighborhood. Um, and then on the next slide, I'll go through some of the, uh, elements that show our alignment with the Western Avenue Corridor Study that Ted had mentioned. So the image on the top left, you can see where that star is located. Um, this project site is in Zone 2B and 2B2 of the Western Avenue Corridor Study. And the chart on the bottom, uh, shows our alignment with those zoning guidelines. Um, and not only alignment, but shows that we are substantially below, um, the maximum heights and FARs that were contemplated in the zoning. Uh, the maximum floor, uh, floor area ratio for this zone is 3.5. We're proposing a project that's a 1.6 FAR. Uh, we comply with lot coverage and our height is significantly below the maximum height with the tallest part of our building being at 80 feet versus 175 feet. Uh, another important element here is the complete streets that we'll be building along Western Ave, um, that align with the city's complete street guidelines. We're removing all curb cuts from the Western Avenue side of the project to allow for protected bike lane and wide sidewalks. All vehicular access will be from the north side of the site, which is off of McDonald Ave. Next slide, please. Uh, this image just shows, uh, an elevation of 287 Western Avenue, which is in the center of the screen. The dotted lines represent the maximum heights that would have been contemplated. Uh, and shows how we've designed a project that steps down from the taller building to the west at 305 Western Avenue, um, as you step down towards some of the lower-scale buildings at the Art House in Zone 3. Uh, next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Pierce from Perkins and Will, who is going to talk about the architecture and site plan.
Well, everybody, good morning. Thanks for having us. Um, this view, this view, uh, is from Western Avenue, looking at, um, as Mike was describing, on the left-hand side is the uh, three-story lab and office volume that's technically a two-and-a-half-story building. We've sort of the back, the northern portion of the third floor is mechanical penthouse, but we fronted uh, that third floor, uh, facing Western Avenue with that active use of the lab and office space. So you have those active windows overlooking the street. Uh, on the right-hand side, stepping down in height to a two-story building is that co-working space that Mike was describing. Uh, the ground floor, which is open to the public. And then in between those two volumes is the, uh, public courtyard, which has a beautiful garden and will be a kind of unique, um, intimately scaled space within the neighborhood. Next slide. Uh, if we go around to McDonald Avenue, um, here we're looking at the, uh, northwest corner of the building. In the foreground, kind of between those two trees is the, um, parking entry. And at the far kind of left end of this view is the, uh, the two EMS bays. And as you can see, we've kind of set back the mechanical screen on the top, uh, top of the building to reduce the height impact of that and, uh, vary the massing along the streets, sort of break up the, uh, scale of the elevation. Next. Um, and as Mike described, we are removing all of the, uh, vehicular, um, curb cuts along Western Avenue and now building out the, uh, complete street components to really improve that streetscape here. Um, you can see there are two points of entry on Western Avenue to the building. There's the, uh, to the pink bar, which is a co-working space, will be direct access for the public into that space. Um, just as you enter the courtyard, and then uniquely, the lobby, uh, for the main entry to the building is actually at the far and north end of the courtyard. So you'll pass through this kind of beautiful, um, green courtyard space as you enter the building. On, off of Speedway Avenue on the right-hand side, uh, is a, uh, pedestrian entry and the bike room entry off of Western, I'm sorry, off of Speedway Avenue. And then from McDonald, the black, uh, arrows there indicate on the left, the parking entry. And to the, on the right side, both the loading and the EMS space, uh, which has two bays for two vehicles, uh, in the northeast corner of the site. Next. Uh, and this is zooming in on the courtyard, um, and we really think this is a, a unique aspect of the project that'll really enhance, uh, the experience of the neighborhood and create, uh, a unique public space of a unique scale that doesn't exist elsewhere and kind of fits in nicely into the ecosystem of all the different scales of public spaces in the neighborhood. So in the left-hand plan diagram, the blue zone is a more hardscape zone, which can have some flexible speed, um, seating and really works to enhance the experience of that co-working space, making that, uh, indoor-outdoor experience when the weather is nice. And then the purple zone is a viewing garden, uh, which again will create a nice kind of pocket park of nature within this neighborhood that, um, the public can enjoy and will also be sort of a transition zone to the, uh, public entry of the building. Next. We'll hand it back to Mike.
Thanks, Matt. Um, on this next slide, we just wanted to highlight some of our transportation benefits. In addition to the small scale of the project, we've also tried to reduce traffic impacts to the neighborhood. Uh, we're providing a parking ratio that is 50% of BTD's maximum recommendation. So we'll be providing 36 below-grade parking spaces that'll be accessed from the north side of the site, as Matt described. Uh, this is a 50% reduction in the parking that currently exists on site. There are currently 72 spaces, uh, that's getting cut in half to 36. Uh, we're also providing indoor bike storage, uh, making a blue bike station contribution, have electrical vehicle charging stations, and, um, as we mentioned, completing the streets, uh, per the WACERZI study in the city's complete street guidelines. Next slide, please. Uh, and then just, uh, summarizing some of our project benefits. Um, we're really excited that we're able to keep Boston EMS in the neighborhood without any downtime and provide a brand-new facility for them, um, reducing impacts from the scale of our project and building something that is going to be additive to the ecosystem rather than competing with it. Uh, we think that the low density here will fit in nicely with the rest of the neighborhood, um, and create a nice space that will, uh, enhance the community, enhance, uh, the life science ecosystem and the rest of the neighborhood. So with that, that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Mike. Questions, comments from the commission? Can you take the, uh, presentation down, Michael? Whoever's in charge, thank you. Questions, comments?
Hi, I had a quick question, just, um, yeah, I have a question. Um, not, thank you for, I think, a really great presentation. Just as a, a quick question on, uh, why the 50% reduction in the parking requirements for BTD?
Uh, we were trying to minimize, minimize the amount of single occupancy trips to the site. Uh, given the use, uh, in the smaller-scale companies, um, we're going to promote use of the great public transportation that's here on site and encourage people to use, uh, buses, uh, access to the T, the commuter rail. This is a really great location for that, so we think that will be a good sell for, um, our prospective tenants. Okay.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Any, uh, public testimony, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, we do. Uh, John Cusack. Go ahead, John, unmute yourself.
Uh, good morning, Chair Hurley and Commissioners. My name is John Cusack. I live at 186 Washington Street in Brighton. Uh, this is a good-looking project. Tenants represent opportunities for small business growth and future jobs. It's, it's under the guidelines for WACERZI, and maintains a temporary and then permanent home for Boston EMS in a rapidly developing area. I urge you to support the MAP Amendment for Plan Development Area 148 at 287 Western Ave. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeff. At this point, we'll close out this portion of the hearing. We'll go into our business session. Any questions, comments, motions?
I agree with Ricardo. I thought this was a very clear and concise presentation in the project. I, I think the scale is, is quite appropriate for this area. Um, I, I'm, I'm glad to see the, the scale of it versus the envelope that, that could have happened. So I, I'm very supportive and I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve MAP Amendment Application Number 774 Development Plan for Plan Development Area Number 148, 287 Western Ave, Alston, MAP 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7B slash 70.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Harry Numador Roll Call. Jill Hatton?
Yes.
Michael, uh, Nichols?
Yes.
Nelson Arroyo? Nelson, is that a yes?
Yeah.
Is David Ma with us?
No, I don't have him right now, Jay.
All right, all right, my, uh, Drew Left?
Yes.
Aisha Miller?
Yes.
Midori Morikawa?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Congratulations, good luck, unanimous vote.
Hey, Jill, just a question. Jill, when you made the motion, did you include that you were approving the development plan as well?
I did. I read the script on the agenda, which included the MAP Amendment and the development plan. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. 9:15, public hearing. This is a hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for the approval of the Sixth Amendment to the Plan Development Area Number 37 Prudential Center redevelopment. The hearing was duly advertised February 8th, 2024, in the Boston Herald. In the Boston Zoning Commission hearing on petitions, the proponents will first present their case, subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support in opposition at the same time. You're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff if you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name, any group affiliation, and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I will advise you when you have 30 seconds remaining, at that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue when others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief five-to-10 minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Morning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the proposal before you is for the Sixth Amendment to Plan Development Area Number 37, the Prudential Center redevelopment, which accompanied an Article 80 large project known as the Belvedere Street Student Housing Project. That project's located at 39 Dalton Street in the Back Bay within the PDA Number 37 area. This was approved with the BPDA Board on January 18th, 2024. The proposed project is for an interior renovation of the approximately 250,000 square foot south tower of the Sheraton Hotel and a change of use to allow dorm use within this PDA. The proposed renovation of the south tower will convert the existing 428 hotel rooms into approximately 856 student beds, along with approximately 18,000 square feet of student amenity space and a renovated publicly accessible outdoor plaza. The project will also contribute $256,000 to the city of Boston for proposed pedestrian and roadway improvements along Belvedere Street and Dalton Street, including the addition of bike lanes and alterations to the curb regulation of the area to facilitate better pickup and drop-off in this busy corridor. The Sixth Amendment to PDA Number 37 proposes to allow dormitory use within the PDA. Dormitory use will be permitted only so long as it's also identified and approved in a corresponding institutional master plan. Further, it's permitted for an initial 10-year term with an option to extend by additional 10 years at the BPA's discretion. The initial 10-year term is anticipated to be reflected within Northeastern University's institutional master plan and will be added to that document by a currently pending IMP amendment. This will allow the BPDA and the city of Boston to monitor the use for the initial 10-year period and reassess its viability at the end of the term. Northeastern University is just beginning to engage the BPDA on their next 10-year institutional master plan, anticipated to cover a term of 2024 to 2034. This public process will allow for extensive master planning, including a full analysis of the university's footprint and any anticipated growth. We look forward to being backed to the commission, um, with the IMP in the near future. I'll now hand it off to my colleague Ted Schwartzberg from the BPDA Zoning Compliance Team to say a few words before the proponent begins their presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Quinn. I'll speak to two slides on the planning and zoning context for this proposal. And, uh, this is a proposal that I personally staffed in my former role as Back Bay Neighborhood Planner. Uh, the zoning for the site, uh, is an existing PDA, PDA 37, uh, and, uh, Article 41 for, uh, change of use in a PDA was also relevant to the review. Uh, in terms of planning, the most relevant plan is Housing Boston 2030. Uh, and, uh, the site context is the existing Sheridan Hotel Building, which is a stone's throw from the Prudential Green Line Station. Next slide, please. Uh, as Quinn noted, uh, in, uh, the underlying zoning, uh, dormitory use is a conditional use, uh, and that forms the substance of this, uh, review. Uh, in terms of the dimension, there's no change since, uh, it's an existing building that will be reused and, uh, the building itself preceded the establishment of this PDA in 1990. Uh, in terms of, uh, planning, uh, the Housing Boston 2030 Plan, um, advocates for provision of increased, uh, housing opportunities for students in institutional housing, in, uh, university-affiliated housing, and this is very consistent with that goal. Uh, and then, uh, this, uh, proposal also is compliant with the city's bike parking guidelines. Uh, with that, I'll now turn it over to the proponent team. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ted.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. This is Frank Sterns from the Law Firm of Holland and Knight. Uh, with me is Teddy Fogelman from Hawkins Way, representing the ownership of the project, Julie Recker from Gensler. Um, and we also have our partners in this project, Northeastern University, um, available to participate. Um, our, our presentation will be, uh, a bit shorter than the previous excellent presentation. Um, our, our presentation will be, uh, a bit shorter than the previous excellent presentation because, as, uh, Quinn and Ted just noted, we're not really building anything. You know, the existing, the impetus for this project was that the old two-tower Sheridan Hotel had become, um, a significantly underutilized hotel. Uh, there was identified in the city's planning studies a substantial need for additional, uh, institutional affiliated student housing. Um, and the proposal here by the proponent Hawkins Way is to separate the South Tower and the North Tower in the interior lobby. I'm sure you've all been to the Back Bay Sheridan, and you know, when you go in the lobby, you can access either the North Tower or the South Tower of the hotel. There will be interior demising work done to separate this, those two, so that the existing entrance to the hotel will remain, uh, where it is, and the new entrance to the student housing dormitory will be from the exterior plaza. Uh, next slide. So this project has been designed consistent with the, uh, Plan Development Area, which has been in effect in the Prudential Center since nineteen ninety. Um, we think it's important to note that there have been multiple amendments to this PDA over the years to accommodate uh, new buildings and new uses as they've, uh, evolved over the course of time in the Prudential Center. We're only proposing, as, as Quinn noted, to modify the use of the South Tower, which will become the exclusive dormitory. Um, and, uh, it will be done in affiliation with our tenant, Northeastern University. Um, next slide. So you can see here that this existing plaza is one area where we're going to be making substantial improvements. This is where presently there's a pretty, uh, distressed and tired old brick uh, plaza, which is a, a entrance to the former retail locations, uh, that could be accessed both from the inside of the lobby of a hotel as well as uh, this exterior area. Um, this is where the new Northeastern entrance is going to be. There's going to be, uh, you know, a state-of-the-art security entrance for students to come and go. Um, and there's going to be uh, a substantial improvement of the plaza with, um, amenities, including seating, uh, bicycle accommodations, and most significantly, an extensive amount of new, uh, and improved landscaping, so that the area is a more of an attractive, uh, exterior area and an attractive entrance, uh, to the dormitory. Uh, next slide. This is just a rendering of some of the, uh, a pictorial rendering of some of the landscaping improvements. And in addition, as, as Quinn mentioned, uh, the project proponent is going to be making investment in city projects in the area. They're going to give, providing funding for the city to do, under the city's direction, to do uh, pedestrian, bicycle, and roadway improvements in the immediate area. There's going to be a substantial contribution to a bike share program, as well as multiple locations where, uh, students who use the dormitory can, uh, park and store their bicycles, both weather-protected inside the building as well as some exterior, uh, bicycle, uh, accommodations. Um, as noted, the project has been through extensive community review. We really appreciate the cooperation and work of the BPA staff, and the approval we received last month from the, from the BPA Board. Uh, we had an IAG. We had IAG meetings and community meetings. Uh, we had extensive input, which gave rise to a lot of the uh, positive suggestions for funding of public improvements and landscaping improvements. Um, and we're very pleased that, um, we feel we have, uh, strong community support to basically, uh, contribute to meeting the city's, um, affordable housing goals, taking some pressure off the, uh, community where now there will be, um, you know, permanent residents for students. Um, and, and the ability to free up some apartments in the neighborhood for, for non-students. And, um, we really appreciate everybody's support on this, and we're available as well as folks from Northeastern. If you have any questions, and, um, we thank you, um, for your consideration.
Thank you, Frank.
Could I, could I ask a question of Quinn maybe?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
I, I, I noticed in the materials that you were going to offer the students um, a bike rack that could be installed in their room. And I think that was a big part of the bike storage strategy. And I was curious if you could just explain that, because obviously people have to want to use it for it to work, and I, I'm not familiar with that. And so could, could you explain how you do that in these dorm rooms? You, you offer each occupant some type of, um, installate, installed item that they can stick their bike up on the ceiling, or how does that work?
I think someone either from the Hawkins Way or the Northeastern team might be best suited to answer that.
Yeah. Uh, so our first option is not actually the, the bike storage. We're building out a bike room, um, just adjacent to that plaza. Um, I think that bike room will have, uh, between fifteen, a hundred bikes, Julie. Can you remember that? Two bikes jumping in with it. Um, so that'll be the first option for the students to use. If that room reaches capacity, and there is a need for an individual student to want an additional place to store their bike, then they would store it in their room. Uh, ownership would work with the operations team to install it in the room, um, and then the student would be able to utilize it. But just want to make clear, that is not our bike. It's not the first option for the students. The first option is a dedicated bike room that's adjacent, accessible from the street.
And that dedicated bike room is secure, weather-protected, and only for the student residents?
Hmm. Okay, and, 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 but, I mean, there are going to be eight hundred some students there, so it's possible you'll get to capacity in that in that room. And so is it just, is it just a hook that you put on the wall and they can stick their bike? I just, you know, those, those hotel rooms aren't huge, but, and you're going to have two occupying each room, so just wanted to, or have you used it in another location and it's been fine? I'm just curious, because obviously it's a big part of the strategy here, and, um...
Sure. Go ahead. I apologize.
No, no, I, I just, I just, uh, wasn't, wasn't sure if you, maybe you had been using that in some other, um, student housing situations.
There are a couple of different types of racks that are made to hold just two bicycles, so they're appropriate for this size of room and are able to do it in a compact space, and they are often, uh, in this case, wall-mounted.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's exactly what I was hoping to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other questions or comments from the, uh, commission? About public testimony, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I have, uh, one raised hand right now. Kathy Spiegelman. Kathy, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Sorry, I just, I wanted to be available for anybody who wanted to ask a question of Northeastern. I'm Vice President and Chief of, of, uh, Planning Real Estate and Facilities. I was going to jump in on the bike question, but it feels like it's already been answered, so.
Thank you, Kathy. Stand by.
Okay.
I have any other raised hands?
All right, thank you, Jeff. And I close out this portion of the hearing, and we're going to enter our business session. Questions, comments, motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Sixth Amendment to the Plan Development Area Number Thirty-Seven Prudential Center redevelopment.
Motion second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call. Jill Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols? Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Michael Demela?
Yes.
Nelson Royal?
Hope you hear me this time. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Uh, Drew Left?
Yes.
Aisha Miller?
Yes.
Midori Morikawa?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Eight, nothing, unanimous. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care of the students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nine thirty, public hearing. This is a hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for the approval of map amendment application number seven, seventy-five, and a petition for approval of development plan, planned amount, development area number one, four, nine, one oh three North Beacon Street, Brighton. The hearing was duly advertised February eighth, twenty twenty-four, on the Boston Herald. In the Boston Zoning Commission hearing, our petitions, the proponent will first present their case and subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff if you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting or would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name and any group affiliation, announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. If necessary, I advise you when you have thirty seconds remaining, at that time, please summarize your remarks, so the meeting can continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents will allow a brief five to ten-minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Thank you again, Commissioners. The proposal before you is for a map amendment and PDA development plan for Plan Development Area Number One, Forty-Nine, which accompanied an Article eighty large project known as the one oh three North Beacon Street Project in the Brighton neighborhood of Boston. This project is approved by the BPA Board on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. The proposed project is for a mixed-use building containing approximately two hundred and forty-five thousand square feet of gross floor area that includes ground floor retail space and cor shell lab-ready space and the remainder of the building. The project includes parking for up to one hundred and ninety-six vehicles, and will be designed to at least lead gold standards. The project will construct low-stress bike lanes along Arthur Street and North Beacon Street to link into the broader community network. And the proponents will provide a seventy-five thousand dollar contribution to support ongoing work at nearby Ringer Park. I'll now hand it over to my colleague Ted Schwartzberg from the BPA Zoning Compliance Team to say a few words before the proponent begins their presentation. Thank you.
You guys, you're the only one working over there, or what's up?
It's a big Ted and Quinn month.
There you go.
Indeed. Thank you, Commissioners, uh, Ted Schwartzberg, uh, and I'm covering this one for my colleague Ben Dunkler, who couldn't be here today. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, I will now present three slides on the planning and zoning context. The zoning for this area is the Guest Street Local Industrial District, uh, L-two, and this is, um, a PD eligible, PDA eligible site. Uh, two plans informed staff review of this proposal. The Brighton Guest Street Planning Study and Urban Design Guidelines, uh, which was adopted in two thousand and twelve, as well as the Austin-Brighton Mobility Plan adopted by the BPA Board in twenty twenty-one. Uh, policies that informed our review are the Smart Utilities Checklist, the EV Readiness Policy, Complete Streets, BTD Parking Maxims, Bike and Parking, uh, Regulation, or Guidelines, and Transportation Demand Management Guidelines. Uh, the neighborhood context is that, uh, this is, um, adjacent to the Boston Landing T Station, and, uh, North Beacon Street represents, uh, the edge between the residential neighborhood to the south and, uh, the newer mixed-use district to the north that's served by the station, uh, Boston Landing MBTA Station. Next slide, please. The two thousand and twelve planning study, uh, looked at this site, uh, and recommendations included active public realm at the ground floor, a mixed-use building, uh, gateway to future development and, and the T. Uh, Arthur Street was envisioned as the gateway and main connection street from North Beacon Street to the T Station as illustrated, uh, on the image on the top. And it was envisioned that heights would step down, uh, towards North Beacon Street. Uh, in terms of the other plan, the Austin-Brighton Mobility Plan, uh, goals included increasing access and mobility choice for all road users, improving bike facilities along North Beacon Street, improving and raising crosswalks, and landscape improvements leading from North Beacon Street and the neighborhoods of the south to the T Station to the north. Next slide, please. Uh, the zoning, uh, that was recommended by that neighborhood plan in two thousand and twelve, uh, was not implemented and, uh, still has not been implemented, so this has uh, the industrial zoning that, uh, preceded that planning study still in place. Um, however, um, the use and the dimensions proposed are consistent, uh, with the neighborhood plan. Uh, office and lab, uh, was envisioned as, uh, a potential use for this site to provide economic opportunity. Uh, and while the height amassing, uh, i- is not, uh, perfectly consistent with the recommendations of the neighborhood plan, it does, uh, preserve the spirit of that plan in terms of stepping down the massing, uh, as you get closer to North Beacon Street. And as I noted earlier, this is not exceeding, uh, zoning that was implemented as a result of that plan. Uh, this is the underlying zoning that we have in this area that, uh, preceded the plan. Um, in terms of public realm, uh, this, this proposal does a, a great job in terms of improving, uh, side sidewalks and streetscape. And then also it's compliant with the Complete Streets Guidelines, transportation parking maximums, as I mentioned earlier, uh, and green building and resilience measures, including, uh, lead gold. Thank you very much. And with that, now I turn it over to the proponent team.
Thanks, Ted.
Great. Thanks, Ted. Uh, good morning, everybody. Phil Casey, CBT Architects here. Um, so we'll start with the neighborhood area here, just to orient everybody to the project. So you can see one oh three North Beacon Street in orange, the project at the corner of North Beacon and Arthur Street, really in the foreground there. And then just to the north, you get a sense of the Guest Street core, that incredible growth and density and height that's taken along or taken place along the Mass Pike. Uh, you can see heights of two hundred and thirty-five, two hundred, a hundred and sixty, and then, as Ted noted, as we step south towards the neighborhood, one oh three North Beacon Street stepping down to ninety-two feet, really mediating the scale between those higher heights along the Mass Pike and the lower scale in density of the residential neighborhood in Brighton. Um, also, interestingly enough, you know, really transformative for this neighborhood is the introduction of the MBTA commuter rail station, the Boston Landing Station, which is just at the end of Arthur Street, uh, between those two buildings there, and really sets up Arthur Street is a community connector. The idea of inviting the community and connecting them to transit, and therefore, really, we feel setting up the one oh three North Beacon Street is a gateway site. This idea of a front door to the neighborhood, welcoming them in, bringing them into this new and evolving district, and all the vibrancy that it has as well as to transit. So the idea that one oh three North Beacon Street not only holds the street wall, but is really a visible marker of that gateway, uh, when we think about the design. Uh, next slide, please, Ted. Uh, and then to the building itself, obviously, uh, two hundred and forty-five thousand square feet, Corin Shell Life Science Building, uh, six stories, uh, I said ninety-two feet to the top of the occupied floor, and then a mechanical penthouse on top of that, uh, FIR three point six five, and the parking spaces all below grade of a hundred and ninety-six feet. And then you can see the massing in the building, as Ted had mentioned, stepping down contextually to North Beacon Street, holding that street wall, but really, um, decreasing sort of the visual dominance of that mechanical penthouse. And then a setback along Arthur Street as well. You can see the main entrance of the project in the center along Arthur Street, too, activating that, uh, passageway and that connector back to transit in Boston. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and then just a little bit about, uh, the compliance of the BPAs' mechanical penthouse design for labs, you know, uh, fully compliant with that, and thinking about really the prime tenants and the goals of that, of the idea of integrating those mechanical penthouses with the architecture. So, uh, we minimize the visual impact to the community, and I think we've done that here both volumetrically with a setback of the mechanical penthouse, and then really integrating that into the architecture, you'll see. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so a view here from the corner of North Beacon and Arthur Street, you can see the, the main entrance along Arthur there, and really that stepping form, uh, that really steps its way down to North Beacon Street with occupied terraces for the idea of, of health and wellness and outside air for the occupants, but also that three-story reading along North Beacon Street. Um, also, excitingly, a very active ground floor plan. You can see all those adjacencies along North Beacon, as well as down Arthur. Uh, the color there, the idea that retail amenity spaces, multiple entries to those spaces will be engaging the public realm all along those edges, again, facilitating that pedestrian movement, um, from the community, North Beacon, uh, down Arthur Street into Boston Landing, in the commuter station. And then architecturally, the architectural language really sort of building off the industrial heritage, we feel like, of the neighborhood. This contemporary industrial look with these large bay windows and sort of black and steel frames, and then really integrating, you can see that mechanical penthouse with this layered approach to the architecture language. Um, really, we think contextualizing the building, uh, within this kind of evolving neighborhood. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and then to the ground plane in the public realm here, this is a landscape plan. You can see, uh, oriented towards Arthur Street in the bottom with the main entrance to the Life Science Building along Arthur Street. Uh, but the page left is North Beacon Street, and the idea of really setting the building back twenty-three feet, a gracious dimension to allow, we think, for that pedestrian movement, it also allows for a green strip. pedestrian movement, it also allows for a green strip along North Beacon Street, which is is really lacking that greenery right now and how this starts to participate in that landscape component. Still leaves about ten feet for a pedestrian corridor for that movement towards transit down Arthur, as well as a zone for seating, et cetera, along as part of the the retail and amenity spaces that will all be fronting along North Beacon. You can see those red arrows being potential entry ways, again, activating that whole sequence, pedestrian sequence. And then down Arthur Street, similarly, about a seventeen foot setback from the curb edge, maintaining that ten foot pedestrian zone. And as then we get farther down Arthur Street, the curb line flare, more seating, more open, the idea of those amenities and retail to spill out into the public realm. And then Hitchboard Street and Herrick Street are really sort of secondary streets, but still allowing enough dimension to get greenery and street trees along those to really improve the whole neighborhood there. You'll notice also along Herrick Street is the entrance to our parking and our loading. Again, kind of a secondary street, maintaining North Beacon and Arthur, primaries for traffic, bike lanes and conforming with all the city of Boston components to that and really facilitating the movement along those two streets. Next slide, please. And then just some street sections, again, to give you the scale, the public realm. On the upper right, there is a street section through North Beacon Street. You can see again that twenty three feet to the curb edge in the building face thirteen foot six beyond the green strip, those street trees, allowing for that ease of pedestrian movement around the building. Similarly, when you go to the below that, that section is along Arthur Street, maintaining that ease of pedestrian movement, seventeen feet to the curb edge, maintaining that greenery strip. The street trees coming along with the paving. And then to page bottom left, you can see Herrick Street, again, kind of those secondary streets, a much smaller scale for the sidewalk. We don't imagine as much pedestrian activity, but still maintaining the street trees and that green edge are all the way around the building. Next slide, please. And then just a few three dimensional views to give you the idea of the experience of the pedestrian experience around the building. This is looking east down North Beacon Street as you come upon the building. So again, those retail frontages you can see in the door entries, that green strip, the street trees and that very gracious proportion, allowing that pedestrian movement along North Beacon, canopies and signage articulating and activating that building edge. Next slide, please. Similarly, moving farther down North Beacon Street, giving you a sense of that retail spill out, the idea of also maintaining that dimension to allow for street street seating as well to activate that public realm and invite the community in and around the corner. Next slide, please. This is now turning the corner, looking down Arthur Street towards Boston Landing and the Boston Landing MBTA stop. Again, activating the edge with amenity space, retail entries and still maintaining that green strip. You can see the bike lane, maintaining that pedestrian corridor down Arthur Street, maintaining that connection to transit for both bike and pedestrians. Next slide, please. This is a view along Arthur, really of the the building entry, the lobby to the life science building and giving relief in that street edge, adding some more depth to it is this sort of moment in the streetscape as you're moving along in sequence. Again, amenity and retail on either side of that, activating the lobby and bringing pedestrians to the street. Next slide, please. And then now on, sorry, Arthur Street, looking back towards North Beacon Street, you start to feel the very gracious sidewalk as it flares out, getting down close towards Boston Landing, allowing for really these sort of moments of respite, the idea of the seating and amenity, building amenity and retail that could spill out. Also, to the right of it, you can see a proposed Bluebike Station. So the idea of having these generous kind of public realm streetscape dimensions to allow for those important things that need to happen for the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And then just a quick view of the building, looking again down Arthur Street back towards North Beacon, you can see this step back along Arthur Street, maintaining that three story scale and dimension, and then the building stepping back with that sort of contemporary industrial character. And I think that's it. Next slide, Ted. And that concludes our presentation. So I think I'm happy to turn it over to Kim Ty for my Q H Q. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Will we take the presentation down? Any questions, comments from the commission?
I guess my only question, just to clarify, I think I read in the materials, this was restricted to biosafety one and two. Was that the was that noted in this presentation, I think?
Hi, Commissioner. My name's Kim Ty. I'm the Director of Development with IQ H Q. It's not in our presentation, however, it is noted in our PDA with the building being used primarily for office, lab, research, development, retail, parking and accessory uses and that the biosafety levels are restricted to one and two.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
The other questions, comments?
I just want to commend CBT and Phil for the presentation on the public realm. I really appreciate the kind of attention to detail, the, you know, the raised planter strips for the trees. You're making it really welcoming and very convincing.
Any public testimony, Jeff?
Yeah. John Cusack, go ahead, John.
You there, John?
He's unmuted. I don't know what the problem is.
Folks earlier, maybe. Maybe. Is there anyone else, Jeff? We can double back then.
Yeah, we'll double back to to him. Hector Rivera, Hector, go ahead.
You there, Hector?
Here now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry about that. Little issues with the mute button anyways. So good morning, good presentation. And I'm a business rep with the Carpenters Union. And on behalf of hundreds of carpenters who lived and work in the city, we are in support of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hector. John, you there? John Cusack?
Yes, sir. Good morning again, Chair Hurley and Commissioners. This is John Cusack, one eighty six Washington Street in Brighton. This project's designed with the multiple entries and the step down towards North Beacon and Arthur is attractive. I appreciate the efforts around sidewalks and the streetscape. And the future tenants represent opportunities for economic growth and future jobs in Boston. I urge you to support map application number seven seventy five for plan development area number one forty nine for one oh three North Beacon Street. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's all I have as chairman.
Thanks, Jeff. Just while we'll close out the this portion of the hearing, we'll enter our business session. Questions, comments, motions?
I just wanted to say too, and as Ricardo noted, I, this building just in the scale of it, I thought was good and but but it's just such a transformative development. Having gone to that Wolfers lighting over the years in Boston Volvo, I mean, I've been on that street years and years and years. It is, it is amazing. I think the, just the, at first it looked like it was using a lot of the site coverage, but I think the way that they've handled the this, the streetscape and the greenery is exquisite. So I was just, I was in, I really think this is a real masterful development for this site, just knowing what it's been for all the years and how it connects to Boston Landing and all the guest street development. I think it's a good, there's consistency and there's, there's, it just, and with the with the commuter rail, I think that it's just, it's a great way to take advantage of a lot of the other elements in this whole area. So commend the developer for pulling that all together.
I'll make a motion to approve a map amendment, the application number seven seventy five, development plan for plan development area number one forty nine, one oh three North Beacon Street, Brighton, map seven A, seven B, seven C, seven D.
A second.
Motion second, I have discussion on the motion. Hearing none. We'll do a roll call. Jill Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Michael Demela?
Yes.
Nelson Royal?
Yes.
Drew Left?
Yes.
Aisha Miller?
Yes.
Dory Morikawa?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
And I bow yes. So that's unanimous vote. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Nine forty five public hearing is a hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for the approval of development plan for phase one A, four ninety five Dorchester Street, South Boston, within plan development area number one four four on the dot. The hearing was duly advertised February eighth, twenty twenty four in the Boston Herald. Then the Boston Zoning Commission hearing our petitions, the proponents will first present their case. They're subject to question by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take the time to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your zoom control panel. This will signal staff do you like to speak when your hand is raised, your hand icon will be blue. If you're calling into the meeting or like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for public testimony, a member of the staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. Please give your full name and a group affiliation and announce whether you support or oppose the petition. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. I best serial advise you when you have thirty seconds remaining. At that time, please summarize your remarks so the meeting can continue when others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief five to ten minute period for rebuttal if they so desire. Please begin the presentation.
Good morning, Chairman Hurley and Commissioners. Thank you. This is John Sissel from Core Investments.
Hey, John. Sorry, Quinn with the BPA. I'm just going to jump in and do an intro first.
Go right ahead. Sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you. One last time, Commissioners. Again, my name is Quinn Valsic. I'm standing in for my colleague Nick Carter, who couldn't be here this morning. The proposal before you this morning is for a project at four ninety five Dorchester Avenue, contained in the PDA Development Plan for Phase One A of the Master Plan for Plan Development Area Number one forty four, the four seventy five to five eleven Dorchester Avenue, also known as Core on the Dot. Located in South Boston, Dorchester Avenue, roughly between Broadway and Andrew Stations, four ninety five Dorchester Avenue represents the first building in Phase One of the Master Plan. Proposed project calls for the construction of a new two hundred and thirty seven unit, market rate sixteen story residential building and a new seven story, ninety four unit, income restricted mid-rise building for seniors joined by a shared podium. The proposed project will contain approximately three hundred and twenty six thousand square feet of gross floor area, including approximately eleven thousand square feet of ground floor retail, commercial space and below grade parking. I'll now hand it over to my colleague Ted Schwartzberg from the BPA Zoning Compliance Team to say a few words before the proponent begins their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. Ted Schwartzberg, and I'm here to present three slides on the planning and zoning context on behalf of my colleague Eileen Michaud, who couldn't be here this morning. In terms of the planning, this site sits squarely in the plan, South Boston, Dorchester Avenue, also known as plan dot av, planning area. And in terms of zoning, that neighborhood plan was not turned into an update to the underlying zoning. So the zoning here is, as in the last instance, a case where the zoning that preceded the planning process is still in place. An LI, Local Industrial, two district, which is noted on this slide, is inconsistent with the the plan's vision for growth in this area. However, the zoning has been updated with a PDA Master Plan overlay, which Quinn noted earlier. Next slide, please. In the, in the planning context, some of the greatest heights and lot coverage in the planning process were envisioned for this exact site. Uses envisioned were a mix of residential, ground floor, retail, commercial, commercial offices, R and D and civic uses. The plan envisioned created a new armature of streets and open spaces in an area of dot av where there are no streets currently, and these streets would be carved out of existing private property. Next slide, please. In terms of zoning, this complies with the recommendations of the plan and perhaps more importantly, it complies with the more recently approved PDA overlay. It complies with maximum heights and lot coverage. It's consistent with use recommendations, provides for the street network that I mentioned earlier, and also provides for a network of open spaces where there are none right now. And with that, I conclude my planning and zoning context slides and pass it along to the proponent. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. John?
Thank you, Ted. Chairman Hurley and Commissioners, thanks for once again very thankful to be before you. It's only been a few months since the PDA Master Plan had been approved and we are quickly moving toward trying to bring our first building, a residential property on dot av before you today. So it's our number one commitment for twenty four twenty five, and we're super excited to be before you again to bring this building. We continue to be very thankful for the community of Andrew Square, the neighborhood, the electives, and of course, the BPA staff for helping us through this process and bringing this building before you. On the call today, I also have John Burrows. I don't know if he was promoted to a presenter. Core has invested in a JV partnership with John and Greg Minot as a part of this first building, four ninety five dot av. And if John's here, he might send his greetings either now or toward the end of the presentation. So thank you, Commissioner. I'll hand it over to Commissioners. I'll hand it over to Mark Rosenstein from Trademark Partners.
Thank you, John.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Before you, you're looking at an image, if you recall, just a few months ago, as John mentioned, we did the twenty one acre master plan, master PDA. Next slide, that master plan was broken down into four phases. And so we're before you today regarding Phase One, which, as you see, was represented with three commercial buildings, a residential building and open space and a network of streets. Next slide, please. And as John mentioned, the commitment was made to bring residential to the project and to the site first. We will be opening a residential building as the first piece to get an occupancy permit. And for that reason, we split Phase One into Phase One A and Phase One B. We're here before you for Phase One A, which is in the northeast corner and is the residential building. The three commercial buildings you see and the two open spaces that are the balance of Phase One, we're in the process with the BPA staff, Urban Design, BCDC. We hope to bring those to you in May or June this year, so they're not far behind. And we're coordinating them with the BPA staff in terms of design and and making sure that they work well with this residential building. But for reasons having to do with the timing of affordable housing tax credits, we wanted to move the residential before you as quickly as possible. And so I'm going to ask Michael LeBlanc from UTIL, our architect, to present the building and then Paula can speak to clients.
Thanks, Mark. So, so as as Mark suggests, you know, four nine five proposes a mixed use, mixed income residential community, which provide ninety four affordable homes for seniors in a transit rich location. It furthers also the the principles of the city of Boston in terms of energy efficiency and sustainability by striving to to reach passive house certification, which is one of the highest benchmarks of energy efficiency that a building of this sort could could achieve. It also is going to strive to and and will meet the city of Boston's, Boston's resiliency guidelines as well. And we'll talk a little bit about that. One quick thing while we remain on the slide, Mark, just I want to point out to the commission that this building is is kind of tasked with mitigating between four very different scales here. We've got the the sort of existing afforded very different contexts. We've got the context of Dorchester Avenue with its three, four, five and six story buildings and also some one story residential build or industrial buildings along it to the to the east of us. Dorchester Ave runs north, south in here, so and and north will will typically be page right on these slides. To the south of us, we're creating a really generous green space and we want our building to interact with that in all kinds of really meaningful ways. We'll talk about that. Then we've got the the Ellery Street context, which is a brand new street being formed here. There's going to be a sort of higher massing along that street. And then we also have Alger Street, which is going to be for practical purposes of the building and access. Mid-block is going to be where we access vehicles and and our service to the to the site. Next. So the 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 building, as you can see it here in the lower right hand corner, just using this this slide to kind of show the limits of this particular project and its position along Dorchester Avenue. Next slide. Just looking at the section. Just looking at the section here, we wanted to talk a little bit about how the building works relative to its larger urban design responsiveness. We're trying very hard to mitigate between the scale of Dorchester Ave, which is on the right hand side of your slide. You can see the existing buildings on the opposite side. By creating a mid-rise building, which is in the scale, the general kind of massing of those buildings along Dorchester Avenue, we then have a larger building on the other side on Ellery Street here, which is a tower, which is going to be responsive to the scale of all of the proposed buildings there. So this building really sort of has a sort of two neighborhood, two scale kind of a component to it. In the center, we have a shared courtyard between our different uses. I'll talk about this in just a moment, which faces to the south and also engages the open space to the south of the building. We're using the the massing here to also create the differentiation between our our senior affordable housing, the 94 units there, and that is, you know, a community in and of itself, which faces Dorchester Avenue, as well as the the tower, which has 237 units in it. Each of these two buildings, though, we're all one building here. The we're using, we've got shared amenities throughout the building, shared shared services. The building, as you can see on the Dorchester Avenue side, is raised a little bit up above above Dorchester elevation. That's for resiliency purposes. The the most extreme example or case of that is that our northeast corner, where we have almost five feet of grade change between existing grade and our ground floor. But we have a really great strategy, we think, for helping to kind of resolve and mitigate those those great differences. Next slide. Our ground floors are activated and populated throughout with active uses. We paying particular attention to what we've what we consider our primary corners, which are the corner of Dorchester Avenue and our open space, as well as Ellery Street and our open space. Those are intended to be active retail uses, which are public facing, public engaging. We also have along the the open space, a stage area where we were hoping to have a more engaging relationship between the building itself and that open space to the south of us, where we can have performances, talks, or it could just be a great place to sit and hang out, you know, in the sun and the shoulder months of the season. Along Dorchester Avenue, we also have our our senior entrance and lobby area. That whole part of the building along Dorchester Ave is raised up, as I said, anywhere between two and a half feet at the at the far left or southern end of our site, up to almost five feet at the far right or northern end of the site. We're creating a strategy of a high road, low road sidewalk here, where we're trying very hard to create an inviting pathway to get you up to that that's that porch area where there's retail, but also taking advantage of that slight grade change between the porch and Dorchester Ave to create a sitting area for the seniors, a kind of whole series of Adirondack chairs or rockers, which will be out there, kind of be being able to be undercover, but also looking out over the the street activity. You can see on Alger Street, where we have our parking and loading and some of our mechanical and back of house spaces and our our tower residential lobby activating and facing Ellery Street. Next slide. So just a couple images of the building here. You can see here where we've where we've got the mid-rise along Dorchester Avenue. This is looking sort of to the northwest from Dorchester Avenue, showing the the mid-rise building, which is trying to break down its scale through a couple of moves, a slot to kind of break up the length of the elevation, breaking the cornice line, which is a which is actually something you see on the opposite side of the street. So we're being very responsive to those those cues. But also, you can see the active and lush sidewalk design along Dorchester Avenue, where we've got the raised porch. We have retail, the seniors entrance, and really generous tree and planting strips along with bike locations and things like that. And to the to the left of the image, you can see the open space. Next. So a quick view looking from Ellery Street to the northeast. You can see the the tower is kind of foregrounded here at this bend in the road at Ellery, which creates what we think is a really nice focal point as cars are moving northbound along Ellery Street. To the right, you can see our open space, and you can also see how we are carving the mid-rise into our south facing courtyard to allow more sunlight and air in and to stream into that space there and make it a much more pleasant and livable space. Next slide. This is a quick view looking north along Dorchester Ave, so Dorchester Ave to our right. You can see that the the generous planting area, starting at the right, very generous sidewalk for people moving along Dorchester Ave, a sloped walkway that gets you up to the slightly elevated area along Dorchester Ave, which is our ground floor to keep all of our ground floor uses out of harm's way in the case of floodwaters. You can see we have outdoor dining, active uses, and things like that. And further down along here is where the seniors entry is along this end of the building. Next. This is a view looking from our open space in green space to the south, towards that stage area. We see this is a great opportunity for a community engagement to create a great backdrop to the stage, to create something which could be a mural or a texture or a pattern. And we're looking forward to having this dialogue with the community. But you can also see how that stage is going to be set up to be able to engage the open space, pardon me, but is also flanked on either side by our retail active uses, so that people using the park will have the opportunity to get a coffee or to go for lunch, or to sit out and just kind of enjoy the sunshine here and look out over the green space. Next. So I'm going to hand it off to Paula Devereaux at this point to kind of go through our PDA compliance.
Thank you, Michael. Chairman Hurley, members of the Commission, I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that Ted Schwartzberg made earlier to so that you can understand that this development plan for 495 Dorchester Avenue is consistent with the PDA master plan that you approved in December of 2023. And further into that, one of the things that the master plan requires is residential use in this site, which is consistent. This is residential use, and will also further affirmatively furthering fair housing for the significant affordability that is being proposed with this building. And that's really it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Last slide for us is just to touch on, next slide is community benefits. I think the two things that I would want to highlight. First, this is one of the most contaminated sites in the city of Boston, right? The extensive remediation at the federal level to remove TSCA regulated soils, clean up this site will be a tremendous benefit for the community in the neighborhood. The asphalt lot out there, only 10 years ago, you weren't allowed to stand on it for more than 10 minutes, or you were risking your health. So significant benefit to the community to remediate that hazardous material. And then second, Michael and others have mentioned, 94 units of serviced and rich, income restricted senior housing on Dorchester Avenue, which is a tremendous need in that neighborhood and in the city of Boston, in a building that is lead platinum, all electric, passive house, and compliant with the resiliency standards of the city of Boston. So we think this is exactly what this site and the plan dot av was intending to create, and we're very proud to bring this forward to your for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, comments from the?
Can I just ask a question of Mark?
Go ahead, Joe.
On the public benefits. In the present, in the materials that we reviewed on pages six and page 28, you went through the public benefits. And can you just explain, there was a there was a notation that linkage from the remainder of Phase 1, which I assume are the other three commercial buildings, are to be used for assistance with financing construction of 495, to be provided for in the PDA for such phase. Can you just explain the that phrase? And I'm just assuming you're directing linkage from the three future component parts of Phase 1 into the 495 affordable, deeply affordable units. Is that kind of the correct interpretation? Or is there more to this?
Jill, that is the correct interpretation. I'm going to ask John Barrows, who also is with us here, to just speak to it for for a second or two, because it's related to that JV affordable partnership.
Thank you.
Chair Hurley, Commissioners, just thank you for the time this morning. Commissioner Hatton, you are on, you're dead on. It is linkage from three buildings, three commercial buildings, part of the master plan that is coming in Phase 1B, that's in front of the BPA now. And and you will see at some point soon, hopefully, that'll be providing linkage funds that we will use for this building. And so we're super excited to, A, keep those funds in the neighborhood, which is what, you know, the policy of the city tries to do, and then be be able to provide the affordable housing for seniors who are super excited and working with us in this process in the community.
And Commissioner Hatton, in terms of timing, that's why I mentioned earlier, Phase 1B should be before you in either May or June this year. So there's not a lot of distance in time between when the residential is approved and those linkage related commercial projects will be before you for consideration.
Okay, thank you. That that that's, I think, the reason I was wondering about this question of how were you going to build 495 if you didn't have the linkage yet. But thank you. That's that's exactly what I was hoping to understand better. So thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Public testimony, Jeff?
Yeah, we have raised here Patty McCormick. Patty, go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman Hurley and zoning commissioner members. I'm Patty McCormick, G-member, ASCA Vice President and Andrews Square resident. I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this project and particularly pleased with the mixed housing with the focus on affordability for seniors, very much needed. Thank you, quarantine, BPDA, and BCDC. You should be proud of the results. On the dot will begin the transformation and revitalization of Dorchester Ave, which has been a long time coming. Fully support the project and can't wait to see shovels in the ground. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
I don't have any more raised hands.
Thank you, Jeff. This point, we'll close out this portion of the hearing. We'll go to our business session. Any discussion, questions, motions?
I'll make a motion, Jay, to that we approve development plan for Phase 1A, 495 Dorchester Avenue, South Boston, within Plan Development Area number 144 on the dot.
Second.
Motion, a second. All right, misplaced my papers there. Do a vote. Jill Hatton?
Yes.
Michael Nichols?
Yes.
Mike Demela?
Yes.
Nelson Royal? Nelson?
Yes.
Drew Left?
Drew recused himself from this hearing.
I'm sorry. I you told me that, Jeff. I'm sorry. My fault. Ayesha Miller?
Yes.
Dori Morikawa?
Yes.
Ricardo Ostrich?
Yes.
Ibo, yes. Eight, nothing, unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait to see. Next meeting, Jeff?
Next meeting is?
The 20th?
March 20th.
Okay.
So we canceled the 13th.
13th is off.
Correct.
Everyone knows that, right? The 13th is off.
Yeah, and I will be sending an updated memo with some dates. Add a second. So we had, we had two days for each month through May. And I'm going to add a second date, June through the end of the year. We may not need them, but with a lot of stuff that's going through the board and the agency right now, it's good to have them on their, you know, on your calendars. And plus, just to refresh your memory, what's coming up in March, April, and May. So expect to see that probably today.
So Jeff, you said March 27?
March 20th.
20th, thank you.
Any questions for me? We're not going to have any presentation. Kathleen had to jump. So.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thanks, guys.